If someone is not paying attention, and I just don't want them to get on my front yard. Um, other than that, uh, I would like to piggyback on Mr. Winter's statement and say I appreciate, uh, Mayor Lot for what he's done, his service, and I hope that in the future, we can, uh, as a city, I know I'm a transplant like him, although I'm from this soil, but nobody knows it. But I, I just, I just hope in the future that we can have a consideration for all of the people and all of the needs, because that's not the impression I'm getting of Camden since I've been here these twenty some years, or been a taxpaying citizen these twenty some years. So I hope that is better. Uh, it's unfortunate the way things had to go. I worked the polls this year, and it was just frightful. And I hope that that is not the climate that I have decided to retire in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose Moore.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
First, I'd like to ask the alderman, do you all get the City and Town Magazine?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Argid, the City and Town Magazine and the email from Arkansas Municipal League came to us September thirteenth telling us the date of the block rooms for reservations. You, which was September the fifteenth, you reached out October the twenty first and asked me to sign you up for the conference in person, which I did. Those rooms go within five minutes.
You also sent me a confirmation email.
And here it is, the Hilton Hampton Inn.
Yes, ma'am. And but then over the weekend,
It's the same thing.
you sent me a confirmation for a different hotel.
No, no, I did. It was an accident.
Okay.
I apologize. But this is it, the Hilton, is what I sent to you?
Yes, ma'am.
And it was still happening. Nothing changed.
Okay.
If it had, I would have told you so. But I just didn't, uh, appreciate you saying that it was unacceptable that you weren't in the manhood.
My understanding from what you sent me, now keep in mind, I was looking at an email on my phone. I was in Little Rock when I got your email Friday afternoon. And my understanding was that you had me on the other side of the river after telling me that I was gonna be in this other hotel. I thought you had changed it on me Friday. And I was, you know.
All these years, I'm pretty thorough with what I do. Now, like I say, I make mistakes too, but that's not one that I would make. If you've got something else, maybe you wasn't supposed to do it.
Okay, well, it it came to me, so that, like I said, I was looking at it on my phone. I wasn't trying to start trouble. I just, uh, I was confused. And like I said, hell, and I were up in Little Rock for, uh, half the weekend.
Well, at least you didn't call me later, because I didn't want to have that kind of email. That's always bad. Thank you all.
Uh, next.
That was it.
If I could back up just a moment, this is just, so I, I don't believe we have a vacancy right now. Uh, we may have a January meeting, so it won't be a vacancy until January's meeting. And so, unless someone has sent support.
We had, it was what, two and three, wasn't it? What, they didn't sign in?
Well, it, so, uh, so in a, when a, when a person is elected to position of council member, if no one runs for the position at all, that council member remains in the position. Because they're the last elected person. So basically, the reason the, the law was set up that way is that instead of the council choosing someone to represent that board, the last person who was elected by the people just remained there. So they're, they're a holdover candidate. So it's possible we could have a holdover if that, if, if no one ran, and the last person is eligible, still continue coming, because they're the last elected official. No, no one new has been elected by the people. Does that make sense, Mayor? You look like one.
I, I didn't.
So that, so it's not a vacancy unless that person doesn't come. So the person who sends a letter of reservation or is not coming to meetings, then we have a vacancy. And at that point, the council would declare a vacancy, and the remaining members of the council, uh, will select someone to represent that board at the next meeting. So, so what I suspect is that January, we will know whether or not we actually have a vacancy. Uh, because you may just have a holdover council member, someone who was elected previously. No one chose to run against them. They just remain the council member until someone chooses to run against them. Uh, it'll be four terms. If they just stay on, no one ever runs against them, they're the last elected person. Uh, now, if they submit a letter of resignation and say, I'm not, I'm no longer going to serve on the council, or they're not coming, and, and then, then we have a vacancy. So right now, we expect to have a vacancy, but right now, we don't have one at this time. And then I think the council, um, would declare a vacancy at the January meeting, and at the February meeting, they would appoint somebody.
All right. We're ready for the mayor's report?
Well, I'm just going to, uh, echo the words that we put out on that, uh, evening of, uh, November the eighth, uh, to just say thank you, uh, to each of you, uh, those of you, uh, the bumps are what we climb on. And so I was very grateful for the opportunity to serve. I hope that I have exemplified for you, uh, leadership, and I cannot, uh, I could not battle, uh, everything that was said, uh, so I hope that you guys will stick around to at least, uh, get the conclusion of some of these matters, uh, before, uh, drawing a conclusion. But I just wanted to say, uh, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity that I've had to serve. If there is no old business, our new business opens with revolution, Resolution Number Seventy Twenty Two, which is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution Number Seventy Twenty Two, a resolution in the City Council, the City of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract of obligation with the Division of Environmental Quality and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Properly seconded. Ready for discussion?
I've got several, because you, Mr. Mr. Frye, when I saw this thing, I said, boy, it worked me up. Seems like we got hijacked by the EPA a few years ago on that. I've kind of forgotten it.
It's four or five years, it's already renewed, so basically what we're doing is for five years.
And the part I got, look, working at the budget at the same time, this is gonna, this would be set to come out of the solid waste fund, I presume, that would be paid.
We're not, we are not paying it, so it's not coming out. I don't know how to reserve it. We're not, we're not paying that now.
Well.
We have to have contract obligations. We can't spend it, so it would be, uh, you would do a restricted camp.
Well, oh, pardon, but it's, it's for two hundred and eighty-five thousand plus eleven thousand more. And it was, is there money there somewhere?
In the reserve camp.
Other, well, that's, well, that's my problem, is that the solid.
It is, it is restricted. I mean, it is restricted, but we're not writing a check for it. It is, it is restricted.
Well, let me, so, so you're saying that that's part of the solid waste fund reserve right now?
That's correct.
So we're obligating that. Well, we're, we're set to overspend our solid waste fund this year with this budget. We're, we're getting ready to go negative. And, and so that is my concern is, hey, we've got a bigger problem there. We weren't, we didn't budget that money in this, this year. And, uh, so it's gonna be a bigger concern when we set this budget for next year. There's three hundred grand of reserve funds in solid waste that we can't use now.
That, that's correct. There's a line of credit issued by the bank.
So we're not writing a check. It's just obligating the funds.
It's not leaving, but I would say if you write a line of credit, it's, it's, you're not even using it. So in my mind, it's.
They're calling in our marker.
You can't get it back in the bill.
Okay.
But it is not actually being sent because of closing lanes.
Those, uh, is there any more discussion on Resolution Seventy Twenty Two?
One, one other thing. I want, do, who, does anybody cross-check their numbers? I mean, they come down here and write us a big ticket for something, and I mean, do, do we get to challenge that?
So when I.
Where do they get their numbers?
When I came in, I think we were not, the formula we were using was different than the formula they're using now. Is, is this, this is the money we're talking about?
No, that was the tipping fees. That was the tipping fees issue.
Right, that may have been Southwest.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay.
This, this had been in our budget since twenty sixteen or seventeen, this, this figure.
Well, and, and we had had a line of credit during that entire time.
Yep.
So, 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 so we entered it one five years ago, and then the bank issued a line of credit, and it's been sitting there since then.
But it's doubled this year from what we've had, or almost doubled.
One, one, yes, it went up substantially. It did, it did up substantially.
Okay.
And, 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 uh, other works might be able to speak more for it than the formula you use, or how much agents we have, how much is being used, whether we've had any issues with it in the past. So I can't necessarily speak to each of those.
Just like to say, somebody had to prove that to me or something, you know, but, okay, we probably just.
But there anyway, well, the problem is we have permits. So when it's permit, that, that puts us in disadvantage, because, uh, it's not up to them to prove it. It's up to us. We, we don't have to have a permit. They're just gonna say, you don't want a permit, that's fine. You don't have to have it.
Okay.
Uh, and then they'll take the obligation that we already have right now in the line of credit and use that for the project.
Okay.
Wish I had a better answer.
They got us.
Mm-hmm. Any more discussion on Resolution Seventy Twenty Two? Those in favor, use voting sign of I. Those opposed, use voting sign of A. I is having on Resolution Seventy Twenty Two. Resolution Number Seventy One Twenty Two, which is also introduced by the mayor.
Resolution Number Seventy One Twenty Two, a resolution providing for and adopting for the City of Camden, Arkansas, an annual operating budget for the twelve months beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein, provided for, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
I'll do it.
Move?
Thank you.
I am properly seconded. We're ready for discussion.
I'll start it. Uh, I think this is mostly worked out through the workshops we've got, but, uh, I passed around the little sheet of my concerns, uh, having looked at this updated thing, where we asked the public works and solid ways to, to put in their full request for equipment stuff. But, uh, as I was reviewing it, our reserve funds for each of these dedicated funds, we're gonna wind up overdrafting those things with the budget numbers that we're projecting and the reserve funds. We're losing so much this year, uh, in those accounts. We knew we were gonna overspend in the street department, but if I'm memory searching or what we had learned last month, we're, we've only spent half of the street money that we intended to this year. We just budgeted one point two million, and we only spent like six hundred thousand in the light lines and so forth. And I don't think any more work's gonna get done by Christmas. So, and we only budgeted seven hundred for next year, so we're, in the budget, just not even catching up what we missed this year. Uh, and the solid waste, it has restricted funds, and they're getting this two hundred and eighty-five is gonna be extra restricted. The way I'm seeing it, we're gonna either have to drop off some of the big equipment that we're doing, or we're gonna have to take the ARPA money and, and move it over into the, to supplement the street fund, the solid waste fund, or, or spend more of the general fund money to transfer into those things to keep them, uh, solid. I, I'm not sure how to work all that out, but that's, like I say, this is, to me, this isn't ready to vote on in its current form. We gotta shuffle some funds around or, uh, dr- drop some equipment off, I think.
With the, with the street, we could not, when we got ready to do more of the streets, the person who we had gotten the bid from, we could not just let someone else do the streets. We had to keep the bid money to who the money was allocated for. So when he was unable to come back, we were unable to move forward, uh, with, with another contractor, without another meeting. So, uh, in addition to the seven hundred or six hundred thousand, I think we would have normally, would normally commit to three hundred, three hundred. There's another three hundred thousand from the grant we wrote in twenty nineteen that just got approved for this year from Street Aid. So that would, uh, I, that would bring you easily to nine hundred thousand, and I was, at that point, I was hoping that you would give another three hundred thousand, make it one point two million for the streets. But if we're already, if you're already over budget, then that may not be, uh, the best way to do that. But you do have access to the over million dollars in the ARPA funds. I would, uh, I would suggest that with the ability to still scale back, uh, or, I, I would suggest that with the ability that you have to amend the budget, that you would still consider going forward with a budget and just do some more scaling as you go. I, but, of course, that's in a, a different opinion. Any more discussion on Resolution Seventy One Twenty Two?
Yes, sir. There are line items fifty-one, one-ten.
What page are you on, sir?
I'm on, it's gonna be on page three, four, five, seven, and eight. Um, that line item is speaking in reference to regular salaries. Um, I know it's a one set sum amount for salaries, but I need the definition of these individuals who are being compensated for this before I can vote on this. So.
You said it's on line.
Line, I'm fifty-one, one-ten. Pages three, four, uh, page three is public administration. Page four is financial administration. Page four again is municipal building. Page five is code enforcement. Page seven is public works, and page eight is public works garage. And so we had a workshop, and the discussion was compensating people be allocated based upon their job description. So if we're gonna do one individual like that, I need all of them to be done like that before I can vote on it.
All right.
Same one, job description.
Job description question, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And who do they answer to? All of these individuals.
Hey, your numbers are still different from my page numbers?
Is it? You know what I'm getting at, though, don't you?
Well, I understand the question, but.
The page numbers might be different, but those line items don't change, uh, based upon the pages. All of them are in reference to regular salaries.
I think it's page seventeen on the board book, so just.
No, within, within the public administration department.
Uh, no, all those that I, I called out. So it's, it's, it's different, um, it's one, two, three, four, five. It's six topics jobs. Uh, my page three says public administration, yeah. Line item fifty-one, one-ten. My page four, finance administration is fifty-one, one-ten. Municipal building is fifty-one, one-ten. It's all regular salaries. I just need the job description, uh, of these individuals, and whether they're being compensated yearly, and who do they answer to. I need all of that. So when people ask me, I don't wanna scratch my head and just to say, I don't know something I should know.
So for rec, for fifty-one, one-ten, public adminis, administration is actually for me page fifteen.
Fifteen, I, I think he's looking at the November budget, the November financial, not our twenty twenty-three budget, I, I believe.
No, no, that's right. You're correct, Mr. Lindsay, but yet still, I, I need those, uh, what I'm asking for.
All right. And so then that would mean that in order for, for the bu, for the budget or the bills to be paid in January, it would take another workshop this month, or?
It, you, you think it would take a workshop with just that information being given to me?
Well, it probably.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And all the ways hang up.
I thought we asked for that information at the last workshop.
We did. I, I don't, I didn't get it. I don't have it.
Well, we had a discussion on Monday, and, uh, the issue was separating the city tre, the city treasurer and the city clerk were once one position. Uh, it was decided to separate those two positions. And so at one point, it became, whose job was it anyway? Then some people started picking up other, other work. And at one point, uh, the assistant mayor was, was an individual who was a catch-all for anything that failed. So with that, what you're asking for is ready. It is provided. We, it is available. Uh, and we were going to, we decided not to do the resolution tonight to separate those. However, one has been provided, uh, and, uh, by a city clerk. And, uh, we, we thought it would be a little heavy to go through every bit of that on tonight, but it is ready for your perusal. Uh, but, uh, we wanted one more meeting between those three positions to kind of figure out what their day-to-day also look like, et cetera, and to all sit down in one room to do it. But we do have a written, those written copies are available. We discussed it and have it ready from mon, from this past Monday. So it's just not in your hands.
For, for those.
Is it okay to just send that information without?
Right. Well, uh, I think, so I think there's two, there, there's two issues. So, so, so if the high number you're looking at says regular salary, that's the, that's the total of that whole department. And then, and then, and then a few pages further on, it brings it in into each actual position. So do you see that part?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so that's showing exactly what each position is making. So, so that, that you should have. But you, but, but you don't have the job description for it. I agree. So that's what I'm saying.
So, so.
So when it says like salary, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, there is.
I know there's, I know there are individuals that are up under that umbrella.
Right.
My thing is, if it's a sweep, if it's a street sweeper, his job description needs to say street sweeper. I don't need him to be at the park or nothing else. I just need him to do his job description. So if we're gonna compensate people for doing their job and not for what they're doing, that they're not getting compensated for, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't have to be made to do it. So that's what I'm getting at. This is just me. This is just me. I'm, I'm, I'm just one of them.
I'm just trying to answer some, so, so, I think what I, what I hear you saying is, is about the job description. Let's say street sweeper.
Yes.
And, and that's valid. What I was saying was that it's gonna say public work salary, five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then below that, there's something that says, street sweeper, street sweeper, five, at twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. So, so it's broken down to what a street, street sweeper makes in your example.
Right.
Individually.
Yes.
But, but, right. But you're asking for the actual job description.
Actual job description. So I mean, I, I need that for my, for my own self, uh, for the simple fact, uh, if an individual is being compensated to do one job, he's doing one and a half jobs, uh, the pat on the back is not gonna suffice of that individual nor his family. So I just need a job description. If he's gonna be doing, uh, a job and a half, he needs to be compensated for doing the job and a half, and it need to be in the budget. We don't need to get to the next month, then we need to adjust or amend the budget. It should already be on paper. That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, in that discussion when we had it, there was some discussion that came about why we were paying somebody different wages for different things as far as the raise. There was some five percent, some ten percent, whatever the case might be, just an analogy I'm using. And then we asked for a job description. What are they doing? What did their job encompass? And, and I've been a part of this board for a while, man. I've heard people say, that ain't my job, and this ain't this. That's not my dog in that fight. That's, that's the mayor's fight. But everybody here, I thought, and, and I went to the municipal league about it, but I thought they work for the mayor. This is his administration. This is here, he sets the agenda. Man, as far as this special work, I've never seen a job description.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you wanting job descriptions or are you wanting job duties? Because job descriptions give you an overall picture of what the employee is doing, and a list of job duties tells you exactly what the employee does.
That's, that's what I want. I understand, I understand from my previous positions at companies. I know verbiage can be put in there and implemented for somebody to do something that they're not gonna be compensated for. That's not what I want. I want exactly what they're gonna do, not no et cetera, or none of that.
You want a list of job duties then?
Yes. And what they supposed, yes, ma'am. I mean, so if somebody asks me, I don't wanna say, well, let me get back with you. I don't need to do that. I need to already have that information in my head or in my hand.
There are a few people who are gonna have to do some more work to get job duties, because we only have duties lists for a limited number of people. Job descriptions are an overall, uh, you know, you may have to do this, this, and this, but sometimes includes this.
Yes. I, I just.
But duty goes down, you know, if you're doing this, and this, and this, and this, and this.
Yes. And I need all, I need all of them.
So you want duties.
Yes, for everybody that's being paid by the City of Camden.
Okay. Uh, I can get your descriptions tomorrow. Duties are gonna take a little while.
That's, that's fine. I just, I just need, yes.
Mayor, are you asking for specifics, uh, Mr. McCoy, or are we covering everybody?
Everybody that gets a check from the City of Camden for working. Yes.
Yes, sir.
And he did make the distinction between descriptions and duties there. She did. So we, yeah, we had the descriptions. I don't think, uh, we clear on duties. Duties gets down to who gets the mail, who opens the mail, who does all of that. And, uh, and so I think the reason that we have not been, uh, so particular is because each mayor gets his or her, uh, choice in how certain duties are distributed and how it best functions for that individual. And so when it came to the description, uh, the municipal league is perfect for that. But when it comes to function, we've shrunk, uh, the city, uh, since the last census, it's really shrunk a bit. And, uh, s, you know, some things are, uh, easier done, uh, with fewer people. Some things, sometimes you need, may need an extra person for it. And for that cause, we may, we, that duties list will be something that, uh, will be on somebody else to get that part done. But the, the, the job description, we do have that available. Would you like that now, uh, or would you like to get everything at some other point?
I'll just give you emails that.
Description?
Tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
Duties are gonna take me a little while.
Okay.
Will all of us get a email on that?
Yeah. I'll, I'll put it out to everybody.
Because at the bottom of the description, it, it, on every page, it says, and all of the duties inside.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, that, that, that's what I was saying when I said et cetera.
Yeah.
And so you can't, don't, please don't add no verbiage in there to try to manipulate or work for the City of Camden to make them do something that they're not going to be paid for. That's what I'm getting at.
That's, that's not, I need to be able to count from this call.
No, it, I said, this is just me.
That's right. That's right.
So it, it, it don't have to be my call, but I, I have a vote and a voice to say whatever I need to say based on what people have came to me and questioned me in reference to.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Is there any more discussion on Resolution Seventy One Twenty Two?
Let me offer a suggestion. I suggest that, uh, we not pass this the way, in the state it's in right now, because I do think these will work, and that we have a budget meeting the first Tuesday of January. That would be a week before our regular January meeting. And we could try to hash out some of these things. And I, I, like I said, interested to see what everybody's answers are about how we handled, moved this money around to keep these funds, uh, with a cash balance. Because right now, there's cases of the overdraft.
We'd be broke. So, so I, I would, I would say there is an issue with that, uh, and maybe the solution is that if there is not either a, a continuing resolution that says that the positions are being funded at the current rate, and we get into January, the payroll can't be made, because there will not be a resolution to make any of those payments.
I thought we had done this, uh, past the budget in, in years past, more than once.
Yeah, but the budget didn't take that. That's, I mean, I guess the, the treasurer, but that's my understanding. I mean, we don't have a res, you can have a continuing resolution that basically just says we're gonna temporarily fund it at the rate that we're at right now, but.
Okay.
But.
For the payroll.
Right. But we would need to have something, because otherwise, uh, the treasurer, she can't write that payroll, she would never.
Is that right? When the next payroll come out?
And that may be the question. Maybe that's what we did. Maybe we met before the payroll, even. I think that maybe we not met on the first week in January, so, so that's possible.
I don't know, but I, I remember that more than once under Claybaker, it came up that, uh.
And it doesn't have to be passed until the end of January.
Right.
So, so that is true, that we are legal, the question of just being able to pay bills, uh.
The first payment will begin.
Okay. Well, we, we could meet the, I think that the third is the, uh, third is Tuesday.
That's correct.
So you can't meet anymore this month?
Yeah, we could.
That's what you're telling me?
No, no, no.
Oh, I didn't actually.
No.
I think, I think, I think we're waiting on new leadership. I think that's.
Point out, we get to January the first, if you said we're gonna meet January the fifteenth, the budget does not legally have to be passed until the end of January.
Yeah.
But it's a little bit, uh, misleading, because even though the budget doesn't have to legally be passed, if the treasurer says, I can't write the payroll.
That's right.
We gotta do something before then.
How quick can you write a continuing resolution for us to vote on?
Yep, we, we can do that tonight. Yep, we we can do that tonight.
Alright. Any more discussion on resolution seventy-one twenty-two? Those in favor use vote sign of aye. Those opposed use vote sign of nay.
Nay.
Nay is having on resolution seventy-one twenty-two. We are now, uh, up to other business.
I'll make the motion that, uh, Councilor Wilson Fry write us up a continuing resolution to do payroll for the first part of January of twenty twenty-three.
Was it, yes?
I I was gonna ask Ms. Fry if we needed to add verbiage to pay bills that may come in between now and then as well, on the continuing resolution?
Well, we're actually good through December thirty-first, right? It's just that first week.
Right.
So so we're good to December thirty-first, but what you're, what you're saying is that the first paychecks come out on that Thursday of that week, of the first week, and you need something to get you through to to that. To be, to have permission to pay those bills.
Talking about meeting on the third, if I really just meet on the third, and then we pass the full budget, or we pass the resolution at that time?
On the t- we're on the tenth when we meet normally.
You have to meet on the third.
So it can't be a workshop, it has to be a meeting, because you're gonna have to agree to have, uh, have a vote in order to pay bills, and you don't wanna get behind.
Well, I was thinking you were gonna write us up a resolution where we're good to go.
At least until the tenth. Y'all have something else to discuss on?
You're doing it now?
Well, I, let me ask, I asked earlier this question, I mean, I hope that somebody, man, maybe you, somebody can tell us how this solar farm is supposed to give us these credits, I would like to, you know, we're 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 paying these electric bills, we're supposed to be getting credits, you can't match up where our expenses are. And, uh, I think it's time the people to pedal this thing off on us, uh.
And we're supposed to give us on that analysis, but we never heard back. I've emailed an email, Mr. Richard Swenson a couple of weeks ago, said he had a new contact, and I'll check if we're gonna go for it, see if he's hired anything.
Well, it it would, like I say, you'd like to know is the, how much electricity is being spent at the city shop versus the solid waste and and these things, and where's the credit going? Somebody's getting the credit.
May I, Mr. Mayor? May I, sir?
Yes, sir.
Seems like you know a little bit about that. Uh, the solar farm. He was our contact, my main couple of license.
He was our contact?
Yeah.
If, um.
He came, he came here and sold it to us, he sponsored it. Remember I asked him several questions about the production of the electricity and everything, and how much we produce, what do we do with the overflow of electricity? And he said he would bring it back and show me all about it.
And I spent some on the stacks of our electric bill.
So, uh, I think we initially started with the guy Bill Halter, and our contact became Nick Plastiris. And when, uh, Nick has moved on to another business, and the name of the, of Scenic Solar has changed uh, since then to Rocket, uh, something else. And so with those types of changes and things that were happening, we were trying to, uh, keep a hold on the movement, but now they were moving, uh, pretty fast. And so we've been unable to get a real hold on on them for, uh, to come and to do the explanation. Also, I'm building a, uh, a stack of, uh, information in there so that the transition will be easier for her than it was for me, and, uh, so, uh, the information on that that I do have, I'll have it in a folder. Also, the, uh, information on, uh, there were some people who came here for Thanksgiving, uh, you know, for Fourth of July, and they could not find the hookups, they could not, one of them was down and the other one was, uh, being used for the electric vehicles, and so there's supposed to be a, uh, a hearing where we come over and, uh, everybody can come together and meet to see who will give up land, and, uh, we tried to negotiate, there's no money, there was no money being offered at that time, you're just giving up your property so that people can use it and charge their, uh, vehicle, so we, the EV information will be left on the desk, and also the watershed information will be, uh, left there. Uh, I'll be, once I get the television things out, I I think tomorrow I'll be able to uh, give all keys, it is my suggestion that they would still change the locks so that there's no question about anything like that. Uh, any input projects on my part, once, if you change those locks, but we're gonna make sure that, uh, all of the stuff that we started, uh, that we give the, uh, that all that information is left in one spot. So that way, uh, there'll be no reason, or there there wouldn't be any exchanges, uh, and I wouldn't have to come up in any of the, uh, further, uh, I did, uh, we have tried to get the, there's a light on in the vehicle. Uh, I've already talked to Kevin Franklin about four or five times about that vehicle, I've also, uh, asked for them to change the oil and do some other things, and I've been waiting on a phone call, so when you get the call, when when the vehicle is returned, lights are going to be on because, uh, I have not been able to get, uh, the response necessary to just get the oil changed on the vehicle, uh, so, uh, but, uh, that's, that's who's supposed to do it, so I didn't take it to the Ford place. And, uh, the, there is something wrong with the gases, we had about s- four or five recalls on that one vehicle, uh, but, uh, probably more than four or five, I just know we do two at a time on the recalls. Uh, he and I drive the same, uh, type of vehicle, Chief Woody and I, uh, so I've taken it in, and, uh, I think now there's some kind of, there's something in the gas area that, uh, they have a recall on, that he does have the ability to fix. But, uh, they ordered the parts, it took a long time for them to get here, but when they finally got the parts, I was asking them to go on and fix it, and they did, and so when you hear about the lights, which you probably will, being on it, it's because, uh, no one would, uh, would fix it, and I I didn't wanna take it to an expen- more expensive place to get it done. We almost in.
Can I verify something?
Yes, sir.
You may just.
Clarify? Or verify?
No, sir, this is on the solar panel system.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, the gentleman you was talking about, did he leave the company?
Nick Plastiris left, I have his phone number, Bill Halter is still there, but the name changed. We're getting emails from a whole nother person that I've never met before, uh, in person. Uh, but understand again that this is a four-way type of deal, it is us, it is the hospital, uh, it is the jail, uh, and the water department, so all of us ought to be able to, out of us four, somebody ought to be able to get something, uh, to happen. So, and Judge McAdoo, when I was the assistant mayor, Judge McAdoo, we worked on this one, uh, when I was the assistant mayor, and then we're able to bring it to fruition under, uh, a leadership, but, uh, when they got ready to sell it, they didn't mind driving open, it's just now that they've sold it to us, it's been difficult to get them to even respond to phone and email. And we're waiting on resolution seventy-two twenty-two.
So do we have, uh, cause I need to build someone's computer to be able to print it.
Uh, if you're online, he can, okay.
I don't, I don't know how to get from his computer to the the printer.
Okay.
But if you email it to me.
Okay.
I can.
He can just read it to his game.
You want him to send it to the doctor or anything?
Okay, that will. Yeah, I'll just send it to your line.
Alright.
I didn't know there was that in the deal.
I mean, and they're good, they're they're good.
I didn't know there was that in the deal.
I mean, and they're good, they're they're good. It was this two hundred eighty-five thousand for the roof for the, to, uh, to, where the hatch is over. Their extortion for that solid base, so. You got money in that, but all of a sudden it's locked out, and you can't, it's not there. So we don't have to write a check with this computer.
That's mandated.
Yeah, apparently so, we're gonna get the, you know, they're coming back here and be safe.
Where's the dad who killed?
Here, here. No, no, this is state. And he worked with it. They know the kid.
No. That's how about. Tyler, 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 you know.
Going to Trump, getting some groceries, some cookies or something.
We, um, also, I could mention to you that there were one hundred, we reported one hundred and ninety-eight streetlights, seventy-seven of them, seventy-something of them have been fixed, uh, and that's a good report. And we also get to go back to the normal form of just filling them out, uh, filling them out online, uh, and they're going to start doing them again that way. So out of those two hundred, was it one ninety, two, it was a lot of lights out.
Yeah.
And, uh, we we have about a little over seventy done, uh, almost eighty done, and so we're happy about the response that we've been getting on, uh, on that, alas.
Mr. Mayor, does that, according to lighting, does it still, do you still, do you still come to city hall and you all do it, uh?
Actually, uh, we would, uh, probably, well, I can't say we. Uh, there is a way to go online and do it, however, one of the more popular ways is to call eight seven zero eight three seven fifty-five seventy, Public Works, and they put it in, they too will get a ticket number, that ticket item number will also tell us when that light has been done. So if we run them all through the city, well, if they're run, when they're run through the city, uh, it allows the update, uh, and it it is a method of keeping up with how many of them is out at one time. And so it took a long time, but of course, other companies, uh, you'd be happy to know that when we're online, there are a lot of people, uh, who have gone online to watch, and one of the companies that heard the complaint was working down in Crossit, and when they heard what was going on, they thought that the municipality was over the lights. So they met the other day and they're going to fix, uh, they intend to come and fix lights, uh, and to do some of the things. We had talked about doing some of those, uh, things in Conway, not a lot of them, but some of those, uh, roundabouts to get out of some of the lights that, because of how old some of the lights are here, uh, there there's a surplus of bulbs, and once those bulbs that the city has are done away, are gone away, there's no way to ever fix those lights again without an upgrade. And the expenses of those types of upgrades is, uh, is something that you don't wanna even think about. We also, it was also recommended, we have a relationship of someone who just had to get rid of their lighting system to go from a four, from four ways to six ways or better, and so, and they're doing that, that's a relationship that, uh, we were bartering to get some of their lights that they can't use anymore, so. Probably get an opportunity to get that deal finished before, uh, December thirty-one. So. I guess I'll ask, uh, who's winning now on the timing? The adventure of, uh, the meetings here has been, um, kind of, uh, I guess tedious for the media, and so instead of just taking notes in the meeting, what they do is they bet on how long it'll take us to pontificate. Uh, yeah, right, and so they sit down and bet on how long it'll take us to do two resolutions.
We have some winners.
And, uh, some of the nights that there have been two resolutions, they would bet that it wouldn't take, you know, but forty minutes or something like that. But it'd be one of those resolutions where people come in with a little bit of, uh, a twist to it, and you end up staying for three hours, and so they bet on us, so who's in the lead tonight?
Right now, Kelly at eight oh seven.
Okay. Okay, well.
And whoever wins gets no writing on the air, in English.
Okay, okay, but there it is. Yeah.
But not in the back.
So if you ever wonder why they don't, uh, get upset about, uh, the timing, it's because somebody's back there winning every week.
Yeah, if you're getting excited, gasping, swearing, and yeah, somebody winning the lead.
Besides, when you're wait, waiting on a resolution, some of it should be, uh, should be easier, uh, than it is sometimes, it should be easy.
Do we notice the shorter the agenda, the longer the meeting?
Yes, sir. I was, I was kinda betting on seven thirty tonight. I had, I had already made my plans for eight o'clock.
Today you got seven. Thank you, sir. I'll make the motion that we, uh, pass, uh, resolution seventy-two day twenty-two. Continue.
Do we need to amend the agenda?
We made a motion, uh, to do something. I'll say, yes, yes.
Is there a motion to amend the agenda to include resolution number seventy-two twenty-two to be, yes?
So moved, second.
Moved and second, is there any discussion, uh, on the motion to amend the agenda? Those in favor use vote sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use vote sign of nay. Take a moment, if you will, to read over resolution number seventy-two twenty-two, which will be introduced by the mayor. Is there a motion?
Like motion to approve resolution seventy-two twenty-two.
Uh.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and discussion, this is to ensure that we'll be able to make, uh, the budget and pay bills.
Through through January twenty, January thirty-first, so in the next month, we'll have time to have our meetings, and then we'll just do the next payroll, pay the normal bills, from twelve to right, the current half.
Alright, that, and also notice there's an emergency clause here.
There is.
Okay, I've gotten in trouble for those before, so are we okay with this one, cause it's just a resolution?
Yeah, and I have to go on separate vote on that.
A separate vote?
Yeah, well, it being a part of the. Yeah, with it being a part of the resolution, we still have to do a separate vote.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I need, yeah.
This, this definitely would be.
Needs to pass and then do the emergency.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, a separate vote.
All right. All right. If there's no more discussion on resolution seventy-two, seventy-two twenty-two, uh, all in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay.
Make the motion that we invoke the emergency clause and pass this as our third and final reading.
This is a resolution, not a...
It's a resolution, yeah, not an ordinance.
Not an ordinance, but we, we need to do the, the emergency clause, just the emergency. Okay? It's been moved.
Second.
And properly seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. If there's no other business before us...
Mayor, I move with you, Darren.
Second.
That has worked.
Who won? Who won?
What'd he got you doing there?
Expedite.